Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting of February 4th, 2014. I now convene the meeting, and can we have roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. And Mayor John Mueller is not able to be with us this evening, as he is out of town. And we did have a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting earlier this evening. We met as we meet annually, and got some really great feedback from our planning commissioners, and are planning on meeting more regularly in the coming year, as we continue to improve the process of planning operations. So I don't have any proclamations or presentations this evening. I do have one announcement. The girls' basketball team is holding a fundraiser, this is a really great one, they had done it last year. It's a dinner for four, tri-tip dinner for four, and it's a pick-up-the-dinner. You can call the high school, they will get you tickets, but you pull up to the Portuguese Cultural Center behind City Hall between 4:30 and 6:30 on Sunday, and the girls run out and bring you the dinner. I hear that is more than enough dinner for four, they even have enough sandwiches left for the next day. But you have to buy the tickets before Sunday. So if you're interested, please call the high school, or if you know a girls' basketball player, they're anxious to sell tickets as well. Does anyone have any announcements?
No.
Okay. And before we go further, we should say the Pledge of Allegiance. So, did anyone else have any other announcements?
The only other announcement I have, it's not for Halfman Bay, but it is for Redwood City on Saturday. They will be celebrating their Chinese New Year, and Jeffrey G. did ask me to invite City Council members, and residents of Halfman Bay to come.
If I could just comment on that, Naomi. I went last year. Jeffrey leads fundraising for that. He raises a big chunk of money for that. It's a huge community celebration in the square in front of the History Museum, and it's just fantastic. Drums and dancers and all kinds of great stuff. Please go.
Good, thank you. Any report out from closed sessions?
We did not have a closed session this evening, so I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. City Council reports. I will go to Councilmember Kowalczek.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Fraser. Just a couple things. One, we continue to, let's see, we attended the SAM meeting, Sewer Authority meeting, and are working through, no major issues at this point, but getting ready for the budget season. We are planning for that, and our interim general manager at the Sewer Authority is doing a fine job leading that process. We're also, we're keeping our eye on the flows, so we pay our sewer rates, we pay based on the flows, and there was a little uptick, so we want to make sure we're monitoring that properly, and that we are paying our fair share, and no more than our fair share, or the amount that we're legally required to pay. And then, we also continue to recruit a full-time general manager for the Sewer Authority, and we're in the middle of that process, and we have not made any offers or decisions in that regard yet. And then, the other activity I can report on is I participated in the ribbon-cutting for the Seacrest School Innovation Lab with the mayor and councilmember Patridge, and it's really, a lot of great things going on there. One, the facility is just noteworthy and lovely, and their mission is impressive. But I also really liked that the new head, excuse me, the new head of school, gosh, I can't remember her last name, but it's Takawita is her first name, and she really invited the community to be part of this. It is a private school on the coast, invited the public schools to participate, the principals and administration was there for the public schools, and it really handled well. And while I was there, what I observed was the new senior housing next door that is nearing completion, and it looks great, really great. And I wouldn't have gone down there typically, had I not gone to this event, but it looks really great, and those are my activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alafano?
We had, excuse me, the ribbon-cutting for Dr. Toy's office and Quest Diagnostics. So we now have an OBGYN on the coast periodically, and we have a diagnostic lab right here in town. And I was talking to the representatives, and they said they needed like about 20 or so clients a day to make this work, and they've already hit 20 and 25 some days. So getting the word out is great, saves you a trip over the hill, and they're, according to what I hear, they're one of the best labs in the country. So that's really a positive thing for the town. We went to the Council of Cities Dinner, the county put it on, which was a first for me, and Supervisor Pine walked us through some of the highlights of their budget, and if I recall, I think their budget's like $2 billion. It's kind of a mind-blower when you hear them talk about it. We had a SAM meeting, and again, things are, like Rick says, things are starting to go in the right direction. He had the Chamber, what do they call that?
Annual Dinner.
We had, all the councilmembers were there. The previous mayor gave an award to Sam's Chowder House, which I thought really was well-deserved. The one thing they did this year that was really smart, when they gave awards, pretty much nobody was allowed to say anything. You just got your award, you sat down. That really sped things up. And Rich Gordon does a great job as EMC. And then, this last Saturday, there was a ribbon-cutting for the Gold Works, so Josh, the Washauer family, has taken over the business, and they changed the name from Main Street Gold Works just to Gold Works. It must have been so efficient, because we got there about 10 after 10, the ribbon had already been cut. I've never seen Charisse do things that quick. But it's nice to have them back open again. People were really nervous when they saw them closing. But I think, I'm hoping Josh will do real well.
Thank you. Councilmember Patridge?
Okay, I attended the Airport Roundtable meeting, and this time it was held at the Airport Museum in Terminal 3. And if you ever get a chance to go to Terminal 3 and go to the museum, it is absolutely wonderful. It's a fabulous museum. I didn't even know they had one there until I went there for the meeting, but it's really nice. At the meeting, we held the election for the chairman and the vice-chairman, and Cliff Lance from Brisbane is now the chair, and Supervisor Dave Pine is now the vice-chair. And we approved the resolution honoring all the departing representatives, and welcomed all the new people. We gave out the John C. Long Fly Quiet Awards, and they were presented to three airlines. There was a very lengthy discussion on the status, on the optimization of airspace and procedures in Metroplex Environmental Review. In fact, it was an hour and a half. It was so long. And then, the timeline's so long, I mean, so tight, that finally, I just said, can we just form a subcommittee to meet with the FAA to give our recommendations? Because we had to have them in there by March 24th. And so, we're all looking at our calendars, and there was no way we were going to be able to have a meeting, so we did appoint a subcommittee to do that. And then, we heard a status report on the FAA port departure and oceanic arrivals over the Woodside VOR, and that is going to continually to be monitored. The flights over Woodside were much better, and over Portola Valley, but a lot of it had to do with the great weather we've been having. Cindy Gibbs gave a briefing on the airport noise, and Bert gave another update on the construction that's going to be going on at the airport. So just be aware that the airport is continuing to do a lot of construction. And we approved the meeting calendar for 2014. Attended the Congestion Management Environmental Quality, CMIC, committee. We heard a technical presentation on the feasibility of digester gas to compress natural gas fuel. And then, we heard an information update on the San Mateo County Energy Watch Program. That seems to be coming along. And we received an update on the highway improvement studies along US 101. They're thinking of adding lanes and adding HOV lanes, so they're looking at how they're going to do that. So we had a big discussion about that. We adopted the 2014-15 expenditure plan for the Transportation Fund, for Clean Air County Program Manager Fund for San Mateo County. And Rich Garbino from South City was re-elected as chair, and Barbara Pierce from Redwood City was elected as vice-chair. And then, I also attended the ribbon-cutting at Seacrest, and I have to say, I was so impressed with the classroom, the kids, and the staff. It was really, really rewarding for me to see that, because you don't see all that parent involvement like that they had there that day. So it was really nice. And the classrooms that they just remodeled upstairs, it's so creative. In one classroom, they had it so like, you always felt like you were in the front row. It was low, and then higher, and then high. It was like you were in a theater, but you're at desk. It was really, really nice. Another classroom had desks that you could put in all different kind of positions, and it was really, really, really cool. If you want to use different kinds of ways to have your classroom. And then, the last one was, you could have a classroom where the kids could stand, and if they want to sit, they could sit. And then, if the teacher wanted to sit on the desk, they had this dais thing that you just moved around, and you brought it forward, and, I mean, those classrooms were very innovative. It was amazing to see all that. And then, I attended the Council of Cities along with everybody else, and as Councilmember Alafano said, Mr. Pine did give us a State of the History of San Mateo County. He didn't give it all of it to us, but just the highlights. And it was held at the Historical Museum, but it was a great night. Thanks.
Thank you. I also attended many of the meetings that have already been mentioned, but I do want to point out, at the Chambers Annual Awards Night, our very own city manager, Laura Snideman, did get the Civic Achievement Award. This is the Bev Miller Civic Achievement Award. So congratulations for that. And for the overall award of the evening, for both their business savvy, but their philanthropic, Sam's Chowder House did get an award. Also, the Long Branch did. And volunteer of, lifetime achievement volunteer for the Chamber, Chris Michelson, had received an award. So it was a very nice dinner, and it was run so well. Rich Gordon is a great EMC. I agree. I did attend the Friends of the Library meeting, and it's just, it's getting great, because we're getting new membership in the Friends. The book sales are going really well. You know, it's almost $1,000 a month, anywhere from $800 to $1,000 a month from the book sale at the library, so keep those donations coming. In fact, although we did do a big book sale last November, we're probably going to do another one in the spring, because we have so many books, but just the successfulness of the book-selling daily is great. Which we now have $27,000 in the Friends. The most we've ever had is $12,000. But the great thing about that, through the memberships and that book sale, is that money is what funds all the programs, or many of them. The after-school, the children's programs, the literacy programs over at the library. So those books, the $2, $3 that people buy, really do add up, so that's been great. All right, and that concludes our City Council reports. And now, I will toss it to the city manager for the Organizational Excellence Program.
Thank you. As you all know, I absolutely love this portion of the evening, and it's our opportunity to usually come to you and explain to you some of the behind-scenes work that we do, things that you don't normally get to talk about, and explain to you all the work in detail that things take. Tonight's a little bit different twist. We're not going to go into detail about all the work this program takes, in terms of, even though it does take a lot, in terms of bidding and inspections, and getting everything ready for the process and design and all that. It's also not something that you haven't acted on before, because you do all approve street program in the budget every year. The twist this evening is, I think it's something that you all might not have seen cumulatively, the impact of the program over the past several years. So tonight, our city engineer, Mo Sharma, is going to go through the success the program has had, how Measure J has helped with that success, and all of the work that we've done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mo.
Good evening. I will just go through just a few slides. So our street paving program, it's a multi-year program. It was selected from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's pavement study, which was performed in 2010-11. This MTC's study is based on a Street Saver Program, which is developed by MTC and is utilized by most of the agencies in not just San Francisco Bay Area, but many other communities throughout USA. One main feature of this program is that it recommends that the street maintenance should be in a timely manner. In other words, that the streets which are in fair condition, those should be preserved before tackling the streets which are too far gone, primarily because it's more cost-effective to take care of streets which are still in fair condition. Typically, the street construction, reconstruction would be about 15 times more expensive than the maintenance of streets in fair condition. So in 2011, the city adopted this pavement management program, and it's, before that, for about five years, city could not allocate any funds for street maintenance. So streets did need maintenance at that time. We do have total 27 miles of streets which are maintained by the city, and what the city's program came up with a kind of yearly program, and divided the city in seven zones. And the idea was that the city budget could take care of one zone in each year. In other words, that city would be able to maintain all its streets in fair condition in seven years. So starting in 2011, the City Council started adding money for street repair programs, and later on, after passage of Measure J, that program was enhanced, additional money was added. As a result, in the last three years, in 2011, 12, and 13, the city has completed maintenance of about 17 miles out of 27 miles of the city streets. And on this next slide, I'll just have a quick discussion on the expenditure part. So as you will notice, that the major expenditure has been in '13-'14, and it's also programmed in the current, in the fiscal year 14-15. And that's primarily because of Measure J. For each one of those two years, the City Council has allocated $500,000 each year. Last year, in 2013-14, we were also able to get some grant money, so which also supplemented the city's program. Going forward in 15-16, the funding does revert back to $700,000 unless Measure J is re-approved by the local voters. And on the funding side, you will also notice that besides Measure J, the city does allocate a lot of money from city's own general fund, which is $375,000, which is not common for most cities in the Bay Area, because generally, they are not able to afford any general fund money for the street paving program. They just rely on gas tanks or some other sources. In summary, in three years, city has been able to rehab about 63% of its streets. The seven-year program would be finished in calendar year 2014, which is four years. So that is a great success. And as a result, the pavement condition index, which is determined by the MTC's program, has been increased from 56 to 66, which is 10-point increase, which is very good for Halfman Bay. I'll go over just some quick slides which show before and after for last year. You will notice that on the left is before condition, and right shows the after condition. Another one of the before condition, right in front of the wheelchair ramp, the pavement was pretty raggedy, and on the right shows after conditions, which are... So this is just a kind of, just a couple of slides, and of course, you know, that we have the same kind of results everywhere else, especially on Kelly Avenue, where we were able to also add a sidewalk for the benefit of schoolchildren, because there are several schoolchildren who use that sidewalk, and it was pretty ragged, the earlier asphalt walkway. So that's just a quick summary of our street program to date. And I'll be glad to answer any question.
Thank you, Mo. Besides our funding, we did get some special funding for Kelly Avenue, because it is such a main thoroughfare for tourists, as well as our residents.
We did get state funding, $242,000, with the requirement that the city matches dollar for dollar.
And that wasn't actually related to tourism. It's, the state is changing their funding, well, it's not the state, MTC is changing their funding formulas, and so we actually can do less work with the funding, because there's more restrictions on the funding. So Kelly qualified for that particular line of funding, and it's frankly just a change in how we allocated dollars.
Thank you. Because I know we've had a lot of input from the residents of Ventura Street, which, that's really horrible, and I know we talked at our pre-meeting about adding some more funds to that, so we'll make sure that that's on a list to be considered, because, and I know we have that formula for the streets that are better to get paved, but that, it went down there. It's pretty bad, even on a bike. So thank you, Mo. Councilmembers, any questions? No? Thanks, Mo, for that update.
Just a comment, I think this is great work, by the way, all around, staff and contractors and everybody. This is just really great work. And I believe this was featured in our bulletin that went out, this topic? Or was it not? I don't recall. It was, right?
Yes, it has been in our newsletter, the program, and also, there is a little discussion about how the city will go from this point on, that because it looks like that we are preserving most of the streets in fair condition now, we will be embarking on the streets which needs a little more help.
Got it, thank you. And I know that's a complex thing to deal with, so I'm happy to see that coming before us. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next is city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mayor. I first like to start with a comment on the award, and I could never have accomplished that and been eligible for that award without the leadership and decision-making and the funding from the City Council, so I share that award with you all. Thank you very much. Two quick updates. In December, you all expressed some interest in continuing to work on a new library for the community, bringing a new library as quickly as possible to the community, and we have been doing quite a bit of work, including the fact that Alex Kajikian is going to be leading that project, and we will be having a special meeting coming up on Wednesday, February the 12th. So we invite anybody who's interested in talking about approaches and timelines and process to please attend that meeting. And then, secondarily, we'd mentioned last time, the upcoming General Plan Advisory Committee meeting, their first meeting was about to happen, and it has happened, and I just wanted to again encourage people to participate in that process. We had three people, in addition to the committee members, come and observe and be able to provide comments. And we welcome them not only to the meetings, but also to the website, which is planhmb.org. And there, you can sign up for all kinds of information. You can determine, there's going to be surveys that come out, that kind of thing. One of the reports that's already been issued is what they call Community Conversations, and it was feedback of interviews that were done with people on the street. So again, that information is on the website at planhmb.org, and we'd encourage people to really stay participating in the process.
And so, the meeting is confirmed for next Wednesday, at what time? The February 12th library meeting?
October 6:15.
6:15, okay.
Is it 6:15?
Yeah, so now it's confirmed. Okay. All right.
I'm glad.
Okay, we'll hear more planning on that then. Okay, thank you. And, okay, a little scheduling. All right, thank you. We'll move now to public forum, and we have one card from Mr. John Ullm. And if anyone else has any comments on agenda items, you can fill out a blue card and write the number on it.
Thanks for having me up here. Thanks for having me up here. It's the last meeting, things got caught out of hand with Mr. Benjamin. Quite a few allegations were made that simply are not true. Someone mentioned that there was lots of garbage in the ditch. I've been to the ditch. I've got pictures. There's a couple beer bottles. That's it. There is no wood that has been washed down the stream. The only clogging that is going on is from the vegetation that is holding the banks together, preventing erosion. One of you mentioned that Mr. Benjamin wanted city to pay for to have a stream rerouted so it meandered through his backyard. This wasn't true. The plan Mr. Benjamin proposed, as I understand it, is to route the stream to the south, away from his property, in an effort to deal with the erosion issue. One of you said that there was only one chainsaw that had been taken out. Well, I've read the court decision, and there was quite a bit more found by the court. You were found to have violated laws purposefully. That's quite a bit more than just a chainsaw being pulled out. Last, two of you suggested that there was nothing that the community could do, or the council could do, to deal with the Keigho ditch. Then, basically intimated to the neighbors, it was up to them, and that they would know what to do. Everybody I've shown that tape to is shocked by it, shocked that you would vilify a citizen who simply proved you were breaking the law. As one of you pointed out, because of Jimmy Benjamin, you are now required to follow the law. Well, what would you be doing if it wasn't for Jimmy Benjamin, or other people who watch what you do? So I'm not really sure what the right decision is at the ditch. I know there is no plan for dealing with the erosion. There's sort of a fake plan to chop down some bushes and some weeds, and pretend that you've solved a problem, but that won't solve the problem. In fact, it will probably make it worse. Because I think you all know intuitively, that plants hold riverbanks together. And so, taking it all down willy-nilly without a plan, isn't going to solve any problems, and in fact, may very well accelerate the problems that people are concerned about. As you know, you've been cleaning out the ditch supposedly to deal with flooding issues. Here's a fact. I've asked a bunch of the neighbors over on Keigho, when was the last flood? Nobody there remembers a flood. Nobody there remembers the banks ever being topped. But they see the erosion going on every day in their backyard, and you simply have no plan to deal with it, and have chosen to scapegoat a citizen. It's not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more public comments right now, and we'll move to consent and calendar, and I understand councilmembers want to pull a couple items?
I would like to pull item 10.
Item 10?
I'd like to, excuse me, pull number eight.
All right.
So you're pulling 10?
Number eight and number 10, and since... Number eight and number 10, and since we have a short agenda, we'll move that till the end.
So, with that, I would make a motion, we approve the consent calendars, items one through seven and nine, and we pull eight and 10.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Number call check?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Move now to staff reports. Number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have before you, it's an amendment, there's actually quite a number of changes. However, it is something that deals with emergency preparedness, something the council has put a high priority on. And this evening, the staff member we introduced last time, Michelle, our new administrative services project manager, will be providing you the staff report.
Good evening. So, what I have before you for your approval is the First Amended Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, San Mateo Operational Area Emergency Services Organization. And we first entered into an agreement, April 3, 1997, between the County of San Mateo and cities and towns within the County of San Mateo. The goal of this amended JPA is to spell out current laws, rules, directives, orders, and trends, and define the relationships between the County of San Mateo and the participating cities and other partners. We are required, along with the other cities, to contribute to the JPA based on a formula that takes into account a population and assess property values of each city. They've adopted a budget for two fiscal years, fiscal years 13, 14, and 14, I mean, excuse me, 13, 14, and 14, 15, and it reflects operating expenditures increases in both fiscal years, 1%, 13, 14, 2%, 14, 15. The increases are for health insurance, hazmat, and retirement rates. The city is responsible for contributing $17,694 for fiscal year 13, 14, $17,998 for fiscal year 14, 15, for a total amount not to exceed $35,692. This JPA will remain current level with annual increases of 1% to 2% in the coming years. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? I do serve as director on OES. And the county continues to pursue grants, opportunities for new equipment, especially emergency tactical weapons, hazmat, new fire trucks to handle things. So, they really do have a good arsenal, if any city does need it. No, I mean arsenal is definitely, definitely equipment that you would see out in the desert somewhere, and fully equipped. It's some amazing things, but that costs quarter million, half a million each, and they've managed to get money from federal government, homeland security, and other emergency areas, so. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Number call check?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. We will go back now to item number eight. If staff wanted to just address that, and Councilmember Alafano can make a comment, and we do have a comment from a public speaker as well.
Great, we can give you just a brief overview. See Attorney Tony Candati will do that.
Yes, this is an agreement to authorize the deferral of construction of improvements required as a condition of a coastal development permit for the Birds of Paradise RV Park/hotel project. Under the conditions that were approved by the Planning Commission in September of 2010, the applicant is required to construct certain off-site improvements, including a left turn on northbound Highway 1 into Wavecrest Avenue, and a left turn lane from Wavecrest Avenue onto northbound Highway 1. Also required are some widening of Wavecrest Avenue adjacent to the parcel where the project is located, as well as an extension of the existing Cabrillo Highway bicycle pedestrian pathway in the area of the project site. Under the conditions, the off-site improvements are required to be constructed either prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, or at a time agreed upon between the city and the applicant and Caltrans. And so, this is exactly what is specified by the conditions of approval and agreement that enables city to issue a certificate of occupancy, which also requires the applicant to diligently pursue completion of the off-site improvements, and to have those completed by the end of this year. It also provides for security in the form of a lien on certain property to ensure that if the applicant doesn't perform, the city will have a recourse to funds to build the off-site improvements itself, and then recover those costs against the applicant. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but that in a nutshell is what the agreement is designed to accomplish.
We do have a public call. Mr. Ullam?
Hold on, one more discussion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alafano?
Yes, the reason I pulled this off consent is, I just wanted us to be very clear for the record, some of the conditions that are in this deferred improvement agreement, because I think we've been through a lot with this, and I know certainly applicant has, and we want this to be successful. But we just need to be very clear about some of the critical conditions that need to be met in order for this agreement to work. And a couple of them are that the current title must allow for the city to be added as a lien holder. Number two, the agreement is based upon property appraisals being accurate and able to allow for all the lien holders. And then, last, the applicants need to adhere to all the conditions and to fulfill them in a timely manner. So, I just wanted to make sure we went on record of, before we voted, that we knew very clearly what the key conditions are. And again, I reiterate, we really want this to be a successful operation, and again, very hopeful that all these will be met, and it will be successful. So, with that, if there's no other comments, okay?
So, and with that, there's a comment.
Oh.
So, I think this is good. I think the summary is helpful, thank you, and the securitization of the city's interest is appropriate. Just a quick question. There's a reference to improvements to the south side of Wavecrest Road, and those to be made at a time deemed necessary by the city. Can you give me a quick synopsis of those improvements?
Basically, it's widening the existing path of travel for vehicles, as well as constructing sidewalk curbs and gutters for pedestrian access.
Is that also a continuation of the trail, or is that separate?
The, that is a separate condition, but that's also required as a condition of approval that was imposed by the Planning Commission to extend the Highway 1 bicycle pedestrian trail along the length of the property going north-south. So, the Wavecrest Road improvements will be right on the south side of Wavecrest Road, along Wavecrest Road.
I see.
And then, the trail improvements are parallel to Highway 1.
And the trail improvements are to occur before end of this calendar year, or is that at a time deemed appropriate by the city, or at the time that those trails are continued?
The, the way the agreement is written, those are to occur before the end of this calendar year.
Okay. And that's great. Thank you. I'm good.
With that, I'd make a motion that the council adopt a resolution approving deferred improvement agreement, assessors parcel numbers 065-090-030, comma, 070, and 080-Birds of Paradise RV Park.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Number call check?
Yes.
Number grab, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And the other item pulled was number 10 by Councilmember Patridge, and we also had a card from a public speaker as well. Would you like to introduce the ordinance? Naomi, did you?
The reason why I pulled it, and you may want to take a public comment, was I wanted the public to know that the Main Street Pilosseas Creek project was planned to be approved by Caltrans as a category exclusion project. However, in light of the public controversy, Caltrans has requested the city change its approach to a routine environmental assessment, which was an EA. While routine, the EA will require additional community outreach and studies. So, I just wanted the public to know that the council is going to do that, and I wanted to be able to say that so everybody was aware that we were abiding by Caltrans request.
Thank you. Mr. Ablobi?
I know a bridge item, and Ablobi wants to speak. What a surprise. Before I jump into my comments, I'd like to address my comments to the city staff, who over the past four months, five months, whatever it's been, have been to a person amenable, personable, patient, and above all, professional. And despite whatever professional differences we may have, and there obviously are some, they remain a credit to our community. With that said, and with respect to Councilmember Patridge, the, Caltrans did not ask the city to do an EA, a routine EA. The city was given the choice to decide what they needed to do. Specifically, the city said in their letter to Caltrans communicating that fact, "Caltrans has requested that the city change its approach to a routine environmental assessment." This is not trivial, because it goes to the approach that the city is taking. At any rate, the second thing, and the reason you collectively should not move on this motion tonight, is in the last paragraph of the motion, "This request is to reallocate the budgeted line items as presented in URS Corporation's Exhibit C, Cost Proposal Attachment 1." If I got the same staff agenda that everybody else got, that's what was given. You'll notice that that document is not the same as Exhibit C, which is the fee schedule, and has an eight-page cost schedule after it from the URS contract. This is as provided to me by the city about a month and a half ago. The reason this is significant is you'll notice this document, which breaks down the line items, item by item by item, and this document have nothing to do with each other. This is the Schedule 60 or 60 cost breakdown for URS Corporation. So, to cut to the chase, you haven't seen what they're asking you to vote on. The last thing I'd like to bring to your attention, so the CE has been sort of semi-public knowledge, or the EA has been semi-public knowledge since beginning, middle of December. What isn't public knowledge yet, and what the city's not making public knowledge, and what renders this whole discussion kind of moot, is the city has tossed the bridge replacement plan, and you're going to a bridge rehabilitation plan. This is a line from a Caltrans director, I'm not going to go into details as to who it's from, in an email to me approximately a week ago. "It is my understanding that a demolition is no longer proposed by the project proponent." So, my question to you is, when are you going to tell the rest of us? Thank you.
The, I, oh, excuse me. I think we need to clarify that this was for a change for the URS contract. Had nothing, I just wanted to make sure people knew that we were doing that. But the actual amendment is for the contract with URS Corporation for the bridge project, where we were taking out the public information. We were getting somebody else to do that. So, I mean, what he said is correct, but it's not correct. So, I just wanted to make the people at home understand that this is for a correction on a URS budget item, not about the EA thing. I just wanted people to know we were doing that.
All right, thank you. And staff, those are some interesting comments from the member of the public, and I don't know that, if you can answer them now, or find out who Caltrans is talking to and not sending us that same information.
It's quite interesting information.
Yeah, I can't, I can't address that, because I don't know who is, who Mr. Ablobi spoke with, or who that person may have spoken with who may be involved in the project. But I do know there have been discussions with Caltrans about the alternatives that are being analyzed as part of the environmental review process. But the preferred alternative that was chosen by the city council at the September 17th meeting has not been changed, and that would require subsequent council action.
All right, thank you. This is a very complicated subject, and taking through many years and a lot of people involved, and it's one thing to have rumors and different innuendos, but obviously, it's another to get the complete facts to everyone, and we'll obviously get to the bottom of this and share any information that we have, and certainly, any decisions that are made are made in this body, and they're made in public, too, so.
So, I will make the motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign Amendment 1 to the contract with URS Corporation for the Main Street Pilosseas Creek Bridge Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember call check?
Yes.
Number grab, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Well, thank you, and that concludes our meeting for the evening. All right.
Fine work.
Thank you. Good job.